We have three items on the agenda tonight. And, okay, let's do a roll call first and then we'll...
Vice Mayor Watts.
Here.
Councilman Conapple. Councilman Scott.
Here.
Councilman Petty.
Here.
Councilman Abel.
Here.
Councilman Reese.
Here.
City Attorney Backs.
Here.
Okay, we actually have two special call meetings. The first one, we're going to review and appoint a city attorney. The second item is discussion and vote on the purchase of a utility truck for Public Works, and then discussion and vote on whether we opt in or out of O P E D for retirees. The first item, and I'm very pleased to have three wonderful candidates for the position of city attorney. We put you actually in alphabetical order, Mr. Jim Judkins, Mr. Todd Moore, and Mr. Tom Walsh. What we're going to do is to ask each of you, if you would, to come in alphabetical order, if you don't mind, just tell a little bit about yourself, your practice, your experience with municipal law, why you think this might be a good position for you. And after each of you's had a chance to do that, we'll go around and ask one question per council member to address to all three of you, and we'll go around maybe twice to make sure everybody's had a chance to ask some questions on that. Yes, ma'am?
And, Mayor, before we begin, I am just going to disclose to the council and to you, Mr. Judkins and I do know each other prior to this. We have a pending case in Jackson County Juvenile Court that we were appointed to, so this is not my first time meeting him.
Okay, okay. Thank you for doing that, appreciate it. All right, we'll start with Mr. Judkins.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Jim Judkins. I am from DeKalb County, which is just right next door, Smithville, which is often confusing with being in Smith County, as you all probably know, but lifelong resident there, other than when I went to college, born there, family there. I started practicing law probably back in 2010. Since that time, I've done a lot of just basically general practice work, which is wills, probates, contracts, criminal defense, family law, litigation of different types. I have defended a couple of individuals before a municipal board. As far as representing the municipality, that's something that I've yet to do. I believe I would be a good candidate for this experience because municipal law is something that requires a lot of different areas of law. You may need to open a probate because there's someone who's passed on, who owes the city money, and you have to do a creditor probate. You may have to defend a lawsuit, you may have to defend a contract dispute, but I just thought I would come over and apply, so that's all.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to do one at a time. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Am I incorrect?
Yes, yes. So, Mr. Todd. And this is Mr. Todd Moore.
Good evening, I'm Todd Moore, and thank you for letting me give me this opportunity to speak to you briefly. I have been practicing since 1992, earned my law degree from Tennessee that year, did undergraduate studies at Rose College in Memphis. Spent most of my life, or almost all my life except for school, in middle Tennessee, grew up in Goodlessville. My wife and I moved to Brentwood in 2000, and I opened a practice in Franklin at that time. And municipal law has been a big part of my practice pretty much since I started. Right out of law school, I went to work for a firm in Goodlessville that represented the city there and also the city across Plains. After a couple years working there, was interested in municipal law for reasons that Jim referenced, because it did provide a lot of variety, different issues that you deal with. A lot of, in addition to what he said, you have a lot of planning and zoning issues that I've become maybe more familiar with than I would like in some cases over the last several years, but quite a bit of that, of course, a lot of specific regulations that apply to cities, ordinance drafting, legislative writing, and some litigation. Most of the litigation I've been involved in has involved planning and zoning matters and condemnation work, so it's made up a fair amount of my practice since I've been in private practice in 2000, represented several small municipalities over the years. Currently represent Chapel Hill, and have been with them for over 10 years now. Represented Thompson Station since 2007. Just recently tendered my resignation with the town of Thompson Station, but it would have been 12 years this coming month. Do condemnation work for the city of Brentwood. Represented with now Public Industry Partners, used to be the Tennessee Risk Management Board for several years, I think they changed the name. And served primarily as a consultant, a contact where cities could call if they had legal questions, whatever they were, to answer those questions. So, again, I understand, I don't know the details of some of the situations that the town, city is dealing with. I have been in several situations where cities are undergoing transformation, and there's some disagreements among board members, so I think I'd be familiar working through those with you. I've looked at the charter, so I have some familiarity with how the town is structured, and would be glad to help if it's due to services that I could provide to you, so thanks.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Council. Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, y'all, for having me here. Just a little bit about me. I live in Lebanon, Tennessee, wife, daughter, son. I practice in Mount Juliet. I'm with the firm Rochelle McCullough in Aldes. We have our primary office in Lebanon, and I run the satellite office in Mount Juliet. Prior to becoming an attorney with Rochelle McCullough in Aldes, I was, began my legal career as a law clerk for Judge Thomas Brothers in Nashville. Obviously, in that position, I saw a lot of different type cases and had to learn to think objectively. From there, I went to practice with Gideon and Wiseman, who was, at that time, before they broke up, probably the premier medical malpractice defense firm in Tennessee, if not the nation. We had HCA, TriStar, a number of those entities that we represented. I also conducted fair hearing acts when you're trying to remove doctors' privileges from practicing in a hospital. Subsequent to that, I went with Baydune and Knight, and practiced primarily with commercial litigation, formation of business entities, and basically as close to a general counsel as you can get. I know Mr. Judkins echoed, or I'll echo what Mr. Judkins said in regards to a general counsel. You have a number of different cases that you look at, and over the years, I've done everything, again, from medical malpractice to determining issues with litigation in Wisconsin, federal issues, state issues, down to the General Sessions Courts, which I love to practice in, and that's just, you know, basically representing folks when they're in trouble, when they have problems. Argued in front of the Supreme Court of Tennessee. Subsequent to Baydune and Knight, I lived in Lebanon, and I got tired of the commute down from Lebanon to Nashville every day, so I went with Rochelle McCullough in Aldes. I've been with Rochelle McCullough in Aldes four years, primarily with commercial litigation and a variety of other issues. And what I'll do is circle around back. If chosen for this position, what I'll do and what I can do is look at things objectively. You might not like what I have to tell you, but I would treat you like every other client. And every client I have that comes into my office, I say, "I'm not going to blow smoke, okay? I'm going to tell you like it is." Now, there's a time for attorneys to turn from objective viewing of the facts and the law to being subjective, and that's in trial, that's in mediation, that's when you're representing your client, but you can't represent a client properly telling them what they want to hear. So, again, if I'm awarded this position, what you're going to get from me is, without passion, without prejudice, I'm going to look at the facts, I'm going to tell you what the law is, and then you make your determination, how to go from there. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Now, we're going to go around each councilperson, and if you would ask one question each as we go around, that will be addressed to all three, and then the next person, so we'll start with Vice.
Okay. The only question I've got right now is, what is your, in your experiences with litigation between breach of contract between municipalities or governments?
Do you want us to do it in alphabetical order?
Well, you can go this way, and then we'll go back that way, so it's easy to all, so...
Just make it. In regards to specifically breach of contract litigation with municipalities, I don't have any experience. Breach of contract between entities, between LLCs and specific members, between, that's pretty much in my wheelhouse. I litigate breach of contracts, and quite frankly, what I try to do on behalf of my clients is not litigate, because from an entity standpoint, if entities are there to make money, they don't want to spend money. And if you're litigating things, you're spending money, you're not making money, and presumably that's on the same level from a municipality. So, my advice is I do whatever I can to keep you out of litigation because those attorney's fees ramp up pretty quick.
Right. Thank you.
Yeah, I would definitely echo the sentiment with respect to litigation, and particularly involving two municipalities, whether that's two cities, or whether it's between a city and county, or some other governmental agency. I'm assuming if you have some sort of contract that there's a potential breach issue, it's some sort of interlocal agreement, and, you know, it's in both governmental interest, the interest of both governmental entities to get those issues resolved. If you've got a contract that, for whatever reason, can't be worked out, and you think there's some sort of breach, you know, some sort of solution should really be worked out, and I realize that that may not be possible in every circumstance, and there may be significant liability from one party to another. I'm trying to think of a situation where municipalities, that I'm intimately familiar with, the municipalities have been in breach of contract litigation, and I'm not being able to think it. I have been involved with lawsuits between cities involving annexation, back when the annexation law still allowed for contest, and even under the new annexation law, but haven't seen a breach of contract claim between municipalities.
Thank you.
Mr. Phil?
Okay. We've got Mr. Judkins left.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. Sorry, sorry.
Breach of contract, yes. I tried one three or four weeks ago. Was it between municipalities? That's something I, unlike Mr. Walsh, I have not done. This was a construction contract that we litigated, and I'm not sure what kind of contracts you all have with certain entities, but I'd like to echo what Mr. Walsh said. I agree. I'm not here to just fill your head full of smoke and BS. I don't like that kind, you know? That costs you money, that costs you time. I try to give you my honest, straightforward opinion. If it hurts, it hurts; if it doesn't, it doesn't. But, again, when you get to litigation, it's a different ballgame. You're there to axilously for your client, so just want to say that for the record, so...
All right, thank you.
Okay. Now, Mr. Phil?
This is really a simple question. I've been a lifelong resident in town of Carthage, except for a few years I was in East Tennessee. And some of these questions are, some of these things I'm pointing out, I probably don't know myself, even when I ran for the office. I had to go back and look it up and know, you know, like the population of the town, for instance. So, the question, very basic, do you feel like the knowledge, knowing the background of Carthage, the population, the different residential areas, the business districts, number of schools we have here, and churches, law enforcement, public utilities, hospitals, clinics, health clinics, do you feel like a knowledge of all these things would be important in your job, or is it not necessary as our attorney?
I would like to give my take, especially being someone that has represented several municipalities where I didn't have, didn't live, and didn't have significant contacts with. And, of course, I'm going to say, I think it's to an advantage to some point to not necessarily have the relationship with the people that someone who was a local counsel might have, because it does give a little bit more objectivity on some issues that where, in addition to situations where there may be a strict conflict of interest, where, you know, you've represented someone who has an interest before the town, that's one issue, but even just knowing the people that are involved in certain situations can affect at least the thought process that goes into it. Now, one thing that I would say, exact opposite of, is with respect to litigation, that if the town is in, the city's in litigation, I do think it helps to have local counsel representing the municipality. Municipalities in litigation, again, you know, if the city is sued, there's a high likelihood that it'll be represented by the public into partners under its insurance policy. Depending on what type of case it is, it may be something that's just handled at the judicial level, then it's not as much of an interest necessarily of having local counsel. But if you're involved in condemnation or some other types of litigation where you're going to have a jury involved, or you're going to have a lot of court appearances, then I think having someone local does provide a great benefit.
Yeah, well, and I think, just make sure I understand your question. Is it, you're asking whether familiarity with the town is an asset or a detriment? I think to some extent, it's, it would be an asset, and by familiarity with the town, you went over how many schools, how many districts, whatever. And I think a, not necessarily intimate familiarity with it, walking down the street saying, "Hey, Joe, how are you?", all that, now, where that's great. I love that kind of community feel, but I think definitely a passing familiarity, so you know who you're dealing with, who the folks are, what the issues are with Carthage in particular, as opposed to another town, I think that type of familiarity is a good thing. I think if you go beyond that, to where you are overly familiar with a certain representative or a certain council member, or whatever, then, yes, it can potentially cloud your judgment, and I think what all three of us have kind of intimated thus far is that when you're practicing law, objectivity and critical thinking is an absolute must. You cannot represent any client if you're taking their side, because a lot of times their side is contrary to the law, and if you go in there and you take their side, you know, up until the time you're in front of a judge, then you're doing them a disservice, quite frankly. Yes, Mayor. You know, I think it could go either way. I think having someone who's familiar with all the local dynamics, with what the city needs, what the city wants, I think all of that can be very important, but yet, as Mr. Walsh said, I mean, an attorney has to go by the law, and objectivity can be very important in that. Sometimes emotions and feelings don't really matter when you're reading a statute, or municipal ordinance, or charter, so I could argue it go either way. I don't think it's necessary, that's what, if that's what you're asking, but I think it can help, it can also be detrimental, so...
Thank you. Mr. Petty?
Councilman Petty? I think my question was adequately covered in each of y'all's statements to the last question.
Okay. My question, as a city attorney, how would you handle a dispute between different branches of the city government? So, for example, if the city council votes to enter into a contract with another party at a council meeting, and then following that meeting, the mayor's office directs you not to take any action into negotiating that contract, how do you resolve that dispute?
I'll take the odds that you guys take the last one. Well, I think I'll, I speak for these two gentlemen when I say we would hope that everyone could mutually support the business of the city, but that's not always the case, especially when you have system of checks and balances. First thing I would do is contact M T A S and see if there's any governing authority that's Municipal Technical Advisory Service, see if there's any governing authority on that. If there's not, then I would generally want to ask former attorney the dynamics of the situation and try to assess what was going on. If I understand the charter correctly, the city attorney represents the mayor and the city council acting as a whole, but I think there could be some discrepancy with exactly how that's carried out. That's a question that definitely would need to be looked into, but I think it would, I think it would require some additional research and contacting some other individuals, so...
Yeah, and I'm trying to make sure I got your, had your scenario correct, and I've looked at the charter a couple of times, and your scenario, I think, was that the board had approved a contract, or had approved moving forward with the contract. Is that fair?
Yes.
So, my reading of the charter, and again, I would want to look at this further before, I gave a formal legal opinion, but under that scenario would be, it appears that the mayor does have a veto power over actions that are approved by the council, and that if she has objections, that she can raise those and bring those back to the council at the next meeting, and then the council has the opportunity to override that veto by two-thirds vote. So, if that was done, then I think the city attorney is bound to move forward with that contract and negotiate it. I'm not sure from your facts as to where you are in the process, or hypothetically, where the city might be in the process, but that's my reading of it based on the charter.
I agree with both these gentlemen, and I think what they're pointing to is you've got to research it, and charter says what the charter says, and provided you follow the charter, it is what it is. From a standpoint of how would I address an issue like that, well, one, I would research it. Again, I practice with Rochelle McCullough in Aldes. Bob Rochelle has been representing city governments for a long, long time, and in a firm setting like that, I've got a lot of good attorneys that I go and talk to, because I'm not going to know the answer to every question, every legal problem, right off the bat. I know where I could go find the answer, and that's what I do, and once I find the answer, I talk to other attorneys and say, "This is, this is the issue, this is how I see it. Do you agree? Do you disagree? Why do you disagree? Am I missing something?" And that's pretty much how I believe most attorneys practice. We, I think, you know, most of us are smart enough to know that we're not that smart, and we could lean on other people and ask questions when need be, and based on the advice from folks like that, and what the law says, make a decision, advise you accordingly, and then go from there.
Thank you. Councilman, you go.
So, Mike, for example, we've got a, we've got an issue coming up that's for O P E D retirees, and I'd like to get, as an individual, I would like to get some counsel on, you know, the legalities behind it. What, if we vote for this, what does it mean legally? If we vote against this, what does it mean legally? And what is your availability to us as individuals, not as a whole, but as individuals, to research the way we might want to vote on something, because we might need a legal, outside legal opinion and not want to, might want to use that as part of our research before we vote on something here as a whole?
I mean, I could take it, and from a standpoint, typically what I'd do with my clients is I say, "Here's my cell number, I'm available anytime, all the time. Give me a call." In this instance, you might be looking at a potential conflict, if, because who we would represent is the council and mayor, as a whole, is the city council. Whether having a single member call and say, "Hey, Tom, I've got this issue I'm looking into from a council standpoint, what do I do?" My gut is telling me that's probably going to be pretty close to a conflict, if not a conflict, because I'm not representing the whole thing. So, what I would probably do in that is say, "Hey, we might have a conflict here. I'll shoot out, and I'll shoot out a group email to everybody from a communication standpoint, saying, 'This issue was raised, I've been requested to do research on this issue, here's the research, here's the pros, here's the cons, these are the elements necessary to satisfy burdensome proof', or whatever it may be. Here it is, council and mayor, and do that." But I think if you're asking, "Hey, can I just get advice on one specific thing just for myself?", I would tend to think, without looking into the B P R ethics, that that would more than likely be a conflict.
Just to reiterate your answer on that, if we addressed it kind of as a whole, and we shared, the question was shared with you as a whole, that would be...
Councilman, could we let everyone please just answer, then before we do that?
I wasn't, I wasn't clear on his answer, so I was just asking, if that's okay.
But, yes, as a whole, absolutely. Give me a text, "Hey, we've got a council meeting, we don't have any idea what we're looking at here, could you do some research?"
As long as we include the whole council on it?
Yeah.
Okay.
And mayor, and then I can shoot back a group email, "Here's the memo, this is the law, these are the facts you're looking at, apply the facts to law, and there you go." Is that answered?
Thank you.
Who would like to take that next?
Yeah, as long as it's approved, as long as it's, you know, lawyers, we have certain rules of ethics, you know, that we have to follow, and there could be a conflict created, I'm not sure, but if it's approved, if everyone's fine with it, I, you know, I would talk with anybody at any time, as far as availability. I think that was part of your question, Mr. Abel, but even on vacation, I check my emails, so the world's a small place now, but the issue of what's a conflict, would the entire board need approval, that's something that I guess I'd need to look into.
Yeah, it's been my experience that most of the time, if individual board members have questions, that they are questions that I can respond to as town attorney, that I, if it's a matter that's before the city council, and there's, again, a question regarding it, that it's something I can address, and if appropriate, and it needs to be shared with the entire board, that can be done. Now, I do know that there are situations where board members have, or council members have asked questions that maybe are directed at another council member, or maybe are clearly outside of what the direction of the town has been. For example, if the town, if the council votes to approve a contract, and then a council member that's on the minority of that vote raises issues and wants to ask legal questions about the validity of that, then that presents a conflict, because that individual council member is acting on the... Because that individual council member is acting on their own and, and not in a role inconsistent with the, the clearly stated desire of the council. I may be going a little bit far afield here, but, but one thing I noticed in looking at the charter is that it doesn't appear to create an office of town attorney and set the duties of, of what that role exactly should be. But it does seem to allow the council to create that office by ordinance and define those rules. So I, I think that's something that maybe the city could consider moving forward is, you know, how do we define the role of the attorney? And to maybe address some of those questions in the future.
I, I'm going to ask one question, just a practical question in terms of fees, fee structure. Could you share with each of you what your fee structure is?
Normally, I charge a retainer fee, and then I bill against that. If it goes over, it goes over a little bit, normally I, I won't, won't deal with it, but if it goes over quite a bit, then normally I would bill, and then, you know, the city would, would reimburse me. I believe the, the fee that I quoted, and I certainly don't argue with these gentlemen about the fees, but I felt it was pretty reasonable, so.
Could, I'm sorry, could you tell us the one that it was?
The, the exact amount? I think it was like a $1,000 retainer per month, and that covers up to five hours.
And then, was it 200 over that then?
Yes, but for travel time, I'm at that.
Okay, okay.
And I typically structured the same, the same way I think I had put in my proposal, $1,500 and billed against that at the rate of $200 an hour. There, there were some situations where I would do a flat fee type of range with personal services, but having kind of no idea of, of what the needs of the city are at this point, I would be hesitant to do that.
Sure, okay.
Is that 1,500 for five hours?
No, that's actually, I would just bill against the 1,500, 200 an hour, so it would be seven and a half.
Two fifteen hour, no charge for travel time, no retainer.
Councilman Watts, do you have another question?
Uh, no ma'am.
Councilman Reese, do you have another question?
One other question. I happen to be on the city council, and I'm also a Smith County Commissioner, representing this district. Do you think that that is, at times, could be a conflict of interest? It's legal that I did both, but I'm representing the city of Carthage and this district when I go to the commissioner meetings. We had, without getting into all the, the details from the, the landfill situation, and there were times I thought, well, maybe it'd be a conflict of interest on that, because of the, you'd have to know the history about, behind that. But generally speaking, do you think that would be a conflict of interest? Or is it, you know, I think, personally, I think it's my way of bringing my ideas to the, the commission by being a representative, you know, of town also on the council. So that's my question. Do you think it'd be a conflict?
At, at this point, I, I wouldn't, I, I understand what, what, what you're saying, and that, hey, it, it's legal. I, I think a, a conflict could potentially arise, and you certainly address that issue, you know, when it comes up. You, you understand that there is potential for a conflict here. If it does arise, you, you address it at that point.
Mr. Jenkins?
A friend of mine was in the same situation, and he took a lot of flak over that for a while, but, as you said, it's legally, it's not a conflict, and I don't see any authority that has changed that. So, as Mr. Walsh said, you know, it could be, but as of right now, I mean, I, I wouldn't think it is.
So, could I, could I say it'd be perfectly okay to step aside on certain situations? You know, if that were to arise?
Yeah, I, I, I do think it's appropriate if you wanted to recuse yourself because of your representation of both the county and, and the city if there was an issue that involved both. I, I don't know, it sounds like you probably have researched it recently too, but maybe know more than, than we do. But I, I don't know that it necessarily creates a conflict where you would be required to recuse yourself on a vote, as long as you can say that you were voting what you believe was in the best interest. But, but I would need to look at that a little bit more, for, but certainly you could refuse yourself in that situation.
Councilman Betty, do you have another question?
No.
Councilman Scott?
Yeah, do any of you have any prior experience with building codes enforcement? As far as assisting with building codes, or? Like, we do have another meeting tonight when we're going to be discussing hiring a building inspector, building codes enforcement. Would like someone that does have some experience with that as far as updating our building codes, the legal side of it, as far as condemnation suits. So I'd like to know what the background on that is.
Not on y'all's side of the aisle, I don't. I've represented a couple of builders that, you know, have gone head to head with some folks in Lebanon and Mount Juliet Wilson County with those codes, so I, I have experience with it. But again, it's from some, the other side of the aisle.
Same with Mr. Walsh. I've tried cases, had cases with builders and, and purchasers, and dealt with building codes myself when I did remodeling on my home, so that's all.
I have had a fair amount of experience doing that. Now, I will say, even though I've probably had dozens of, of cases involving, whether it's a, a dilapidated building type scenario, or whether it's new construction where there's code violations, almost never do they go to a, a hearing or a trial. I've had, had a few of those. Most of those, if they get prosecuted in municipal court, the building inspector shows up and puts on the proof. And the only time that, that I have been there to prosecute those is if there's been opposing counsel on the other side. So, so probably less than half a dozen have I actually prosecuted, but have been behind probably dozens of those.
Councilman Ebel, do you have another question?
I'm good to go.
Okay. Would, would you like to say just a few words closing to us before we make some decision here?
I don't have anything, but I, I don't want to wave it. I'd like to, I'd like to wave it.
Wave, okay, thank you.
Maybe.
What, and I will put this out to you, but what I'm thinking, we, unless we have a majority vote for someone on the first vote, could we take a vote and then the two top vote again? And how do you feel about that?
Do we need to do, just so that there's no influence between anybody?
Y'all want to, hey, well, we could, we'll just step out.
That's fine, if you like.
Should we?
Are we over at the counter?
Okay.
Should we do a, just so that there's no, like?
When are they available?
Councilman Scott have another question for, for the?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
They're gone, so that's fine.
My, my, my suggestion was that we write down who we have, and then we get to have them read, read out. That way, there's no influence between all of us on who we feel would be the best qualified. That's just my suggestion.
So you're putting, putting on a piece of paper and then, instead of a?
And then, and then, and then read them off. Just like a ballot? Just like a ballot. We read off the ballot, obviously, we want to see who voted which way. It won't be secret, it's just we write it down, and then everyone's vote is public.
Okay, we can try that, sure.
Is that okay with everybody?
All right, so you, so we just write down who we like on this paper? And then Michael will read, is that what we're saying?
Sure, I can do that.
But I guess my question is, if we don't get a majority vote on the first, then we would take the top two. Is that okay with y'all?
Mr. Moore. Mr. Moore. Mr. Walsh. Mr. Moore. And Mr. Moore. Vote for Mr. Moore, vote for Mr. Walsh. See if that makes your difference.
So that would be the majority. All right.
You would go about them now?
Did they go all the way to the pattern?
I don't know. Do we need to make a public who voted for who? I think we would, yeah, we would want to call for a public vote who voted for who.
I think we have to.
Yeah.
Can we just do a roll call and tell them what's getting voted for?
We can write on the piece of paper and put it on the minutes. We can pass this around and everybody decide who you voted for, I would say. We want to thank all of you excellent attorneys for, for joining us today. We, we did get a vote for Mr. Moore, and we appreciate, again, it was very difficult. You're all wonderful attorneys, and we very, very much appreciate it. And Mr. Moore, thank you, and Mr. Jenkins, Mr. Walsh.
Absolutely, thanks for your time. And good luck. Good luck. Good luck.
I'd like, I'd like to say something quick, and all of y'all brought a lot to the table. I think, and my decision was probably just what was best fit for our situation here, not necessarily the general.
Understandable.
I want to shake your hands, thank you.
Appreciate it, again, good luck.
I'll give you my chair right now if you want it.
Appreciate you, great. We used to hang together and doing duck connection stuff many years ago.
Thank you, appreciate it first. Start tomorrow, I don't care.
We determine between the two when you would like to start, too.
Well, again, I, thank you very much for this appointment. I, I do want to get with David and start to kind of get an idea of, of the issues that the city is dealing with. And so I, I would suggest that David stay on at least through the end of the month and give us time to get together and...
Sure.
You can give him some.
Have more time to plan the party, really, a week.
I think I would, I like that idea, it's very good. So I will leave it to the two of you to figure out the time that, to get together. Thank you so much. Okay, we have two more items on this. Thank you for that. Oh, the public works utility truck. Now, do we want Mr. Fisher to address that?
Yes, I should.
Okay, Mr. Fisher, why don't you come up to the podium? Yeah, come on, that's what it's for.
I got the bids on the three, y'all talking the three bids on the, I got these out there. I didn't know how far y'all want me to go back, so I went back to 2015. A regular truck with nothing on it is $33,000. That's just...
And that's used, or new?
That's used.
How many miles do you have? Roughly, how many miles?
I think it's on a pike of miles you got there.
It's coming down less than one.
How much was the new one?
Thirty-seven, $298.60.
I'm, I'm sorry, what did you save was the, the bid you got again, thirty-seven, or?
Thirty-three on the new one.
Thirty-three for the used.
Thirty-three for the used.
For the used one, okay, yes.
Did you pass along that website? I, I, I had someone from the school board send me a website, basically, that, it was like, they were selling used trucks, and they had full service every 5,000, recorded full service every 5,000 miles. And these were trucks going for like $8,000, $15,000.
I did, I did call the superintendent about that. We, we have to, it's a little different bidding system than we would have with...
It, it is a little bit different, but...
And there's no guarantee they don't have problems, that's what you said, so we...
I don't know, I never...
I would, I would say there's no guarantee, we won't have any problems on any vehicle ever. This would save us tens of thousands of dollars, and they would be very reliable, because they do have, in fact, a log. They, they, they check them out at 100,000 miles, and every 5,000 miles, they've logged in all the service. You've got a history, so you can look at it as if it was your truck the entire time, and, and they're all government vehicles. And, but I, I know it's a different kind of bid, but it would, that's kind of, I mean, between that and $33,000, that's kind of what I'm looking at.
Is, is it my understanding there's some sort of timeframe for this bidding?
I believe four is the time limit to offer them.
Is that a new one?
Oh, wait, no, that's the new one.
New one, and what was price of it?
Thirty-seven, $298.60.
And I, we did call Mr. Bone, Mitchell Bone at...
Wilson County?
Wilson County Motors to see even a 2018. And very honestly, that price wouldn't be any less than what we're getting from the state bid contract there.
Now, we looked at, we looked at, apparently, the one is 33,995. You say that it's not decked out for what you need, it's just a basic truck.
It's just a basic truck.
All right, but this last one, this new one already has the boxes and everything you need.
The light kit, you know, your scroll lights on top, which we got to have, and everything done for that price.
But we went with a used one that's got $82,000, $82,000 miles, which is quite a few miles. Aren't we, by the time we get the boxes on it and all, adding close to another $5,000?
Well, the used one that you're looking at right there, that's the way they come, they already got the beds on them.
Oh, they're the same way?
Yeah.
I misunderstood.
I tried to find something like what we're looking at, the new one, and that's the closest thing I could find.
All right.
The only thing with the, the used one, you won't have the light package on it. That's the only thing, and you won't have the warranty like you would. I presented, tell you, y'all do what you want to do with it, you know, that's all I do.
Question about bidding, did all three provide a used and a new bid?
What made a used and a?
What did the, the three vendors provide? So one might have provided a used, the other might have provided a, a new bid.
The one that, the new one, the 2019 model, that was the new, that was their bid. The other ones I got off a computer, you know, off there and then.
Is it my understanding that we have to do the 2019 bid to get the state bid, am I wrong about that?
Yeah, the state bid has to be on a new.
Has to be on a new bid vehicle to get that lower rate from the state.
Is that the state rate, just, that's the flat state rate?
Yeah, and that's what the new one was, and the other three are just used, because they didn't do a new, because it would have been the same process as this for the same truck, your state bid.
And just to clarify, that website that I sent is just for cities and counties to bid on. It's, it's specifically set up so that cities and counties can save quite a bit of money and not have to buy newer used vehicles, and especially used videos, vehicles that don't have a history on them. So it's, that, that's what it was, and I just sent it to everybody.
I think it's called the Federal Surplus.
Yeah. It's tn.gov/generalservices/generastore, so it's, it's a, it's a, it's a Tennessee, it's a program for Tennessee to say, to save us money.
We can check that out again, I did call his office, and, and he said there, you don't always know the quality, but we can check it out again, I imagine. It's surplus items, basically, that they have.
And you'd have the option to look at that mileage log, I mean, it's just like PCMS in a Humvee.
If the, if the date that we need to get back to them is what?
April four.
Okay, so that we need to get back to them before our next meeting, so how would you like to handle this?
I'd just make a motion, go ahead and just purchase the new truck. I mean, I trust Les and, I mean, he knows what he needs and.
We have a motion, do I hear a second to the motion?
Am I correct that you're going to need a new truck within the next year or two? An additional new truck?
No, I'm good.
In addition to this one?
What did I know of?
I was thinking there was a second truck somewhere that was going to need to be replaced in the next couple of years.
I'm good.
Okay, we have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, is there discussion? If I hear no discussion, all in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Okay, so we have four. One against.
Four, aye, one nay.
Okay. We'll all get a ride in your new truck, right? Thank you, thank you, sir.
It's not only purchased new truck, you purchased from this vendor.
And that's, that's the lower rate we got.
Yes.
Thank you very much. The next item is to discuss if we're going to opt in or out of the O P for retirees.
Yes.
Mr. Michael, would you tell us about that?
We discussed this at a prior meeting and in a lot of the circumstances at that meeting, I'd done more research. And the liability does not fall on the city as far as rates, the rates are paid by the retiree. And in essence, what happens if, if we have a retiree, they get to stay on our insurance plan until they're age sixty-five. But the premium is solely their responsibility and it will be taken out of the retirement, the check that they give. So all, all we're doing is the city is allowing the retirees to stay on our benefits plan, but they're responsible for the premiums.
So we, the city doesn't incur any cost on it?
Yep, and if we opt in, if we can, if something goes awry down the road, we can always opt out. But if we opt out now, we can never opt in, so.
And this is totally different from COVID, that we'd be paying?
Yes.
Just the regular rates?
Yeah, they just basically get to stay in our insurance pool and keep the state insurance even though they're retired, but the premium is paid for by them.
Okay, do I have a motion one way or the other?
On, on the condition that, yeah, if it's, if it's not, incurs no cost to the city, I'll make.
And actually, I gave the response from the head of benefits administration of the state.
Then I'll make the motion to opt in on it. Second.
Okay, so is there any discussion on that? Okay, seeing no discussion, do, all in favor?
Aye.
Of opting in. All opposed? Right, it carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, that's the last item on this, do I hear?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Alrighty, do you want to take a break before going into the next one or go straight into the next one? Okay, we'll start on our second call meeting. Okay, so I'll call the second call, oh, I should have, that was to adjourn and this is to bring this up on meeting, thank you. Okay. This item, and let me kind of explain, when Mr. McHenry replaced our last building inspector who was Mr. Warren. And I spoke with Mr. McHenry a few weeks ago because we, in addition to needing a building inspector, needs a codes inspector, which is basically someone who checks the setback lines, checks the zoning, checks the entrance and exit, make sure everything about the site plan is correct. So that then the building can start and the building inspector can do his job or her job. And in addition to that, a lot of cities that I've checked with and checking around, because Mr. McHenry said, well, I really can't, at that point, said I really don't want to do the codes, I'll do the building inspection, but not the codes. And I said, well, we really need somebody to do both. He said, well, I'm fine, if you find someone who's willing to do both, I'm fine with that, just let me know. So we started looking around and asking different mayors and different, you know, who does this kind of thing. And Mr. Dyer's name came up several times with Salina and Ray Bowling, so we talked with him about all of his credentials, which I think we sent all of that to you. And again, I talked with Mr. McHenry again today, I said, this is nothing about, you're doing a fine job as a building inspector, but we just need all of this, so he was, I thought we're going to come tonight and let us know what he could do of these. Could he do the codes inspections? So I'd like, first of all, Mr. Dyer, just tell us a little bit of what you do, because I'm a little confused about what all this is anyway, if you don't mind, and then we can, maybe Mr. McHenry will read here and he can talk to us.
Well, first of all, I don't want to say anything bad about Mr. McHenry, I've known him for a number of years. And as far as I know, he's a good man, I think he's doing a good job in other areas where he's working, I'm not familiar with your area here. And even when Mr. McHenry, he worked for the city of Coval, and even after he left, the codes director for our day gave him a good name. I was hoping that he would do your codes, would do your property maintenance along with your building inspection. But according to what she says, he don't want to do that. The difference between, let me explain the difference between building inspections and codes inspections. And I hope you'll forgive me, I've got a terrible headache, I'm having sinus problems real bad. The building inspector, he goes out, when that foundation's put in, he inspects it to make sure that it meets international property, international building codes, which you have adopted in this area here. When that building is roughed in, the building inspector, he comes back, he checks the framing, he checks the plumbing, he checks the HVAC, to make sure that all that is built to code, that the material goes in, it is a material that the code has adopted and it goes in that house. When a final inspection's made, he comes, he goes through the house and makes sure that everything works, he makes sure that everything is to code. I know I've got cases where people have bought houses and have a thirty-year mortgage on them and four or five years' house start falling in. And one particular family, they went back to the mortgage company and they said, well, we're not going to make a payment. They said, well, you will too, because we loaned you that money, we loaned you money, good faith, you told us you'd pay it back. Now, that's your building codes. Your property maintenance says, let me explain it this way. Take, for example, I go for a year and I never take a bath. I wear the same clothes, I never shave. Well, how am I going to be, I'm going to look all terrible, aren't I? Well, when you drive through town, not just your town, but any town, and you drive by and you see a $250,000 home there, well, beside it, you see another house, they've got car, junk cars sitting around, they've got used car parts and everything. What's that doing to the house that those people got over there, they're nice house? Maybe you go on down the street, this guy's got a lawn down there and it's grown up two foot tall. That falls on property maintenance. And very few people or very few inspectors like to do property maintenance. Because when you go up and tell a guy that he's got a building that's dilapidated, he needs to clean it up, a lot of times he gets pretty mad. You go by and the guy's lawn's grown up two foot tall, you tell him, ask him, oh, he said, that's my property, I pay taxes on it, I do whatever I want to. So that's the difference. Now, I've worked with recruiters, I've been doing this since 2004. I've worked with recruiters that came into town. And well, I'll take Maray's example, Maray hired me back many years ago. Okay, when he got off interstate, the first thing he saw was a hole, a burned house. When he drove through the middle of town, next thing he saw was the roof of the house that fell in the ground level, four, uh, street level, he robed out, get fell down the basement. Well, when you started to get back on interstate, there was an old service station, it had car parts around it, junk all around the building. Well, I asked the recruiter, I said, what do you think about us getting a factory in here? He said, if a factory owner came in this town, he said, when he drove through, when he got back on interstate, you'd never see him again. It took me three years to get that town cleaned up. I had much more than that cleaned up, the building that was there, the man that owned the building fell in, he got on drugs and he dilapidated his estate that his father left him. Well, I saw he couldn't clean it up, so he sold it. Well, he sold it to a man and I got the man's name. And every week, for four weeks, I'd call to see if the deed had been registered. I'd run a credit check on the man that bought it, he had money. Well, as soon as deeds registered, I went and talked to the gentleman, he said, I plan on renovating the building. He did, fixed it up real nice, the building was rented out, I mean, he spent probably a hundred fifty, two hundred thousand dollars on that building. Put a new roof on it, twenty thousand dollar roof. But anyway, he got it, well, as soon as he got that finished, he rented, he rented the building out. Well, the building next door, the guy that owned it, he came in, he renovated his building. Well, a neighbor's wife came over and ran that one. Well, she put it down and picked it out the back with a sandwich shop in front. Well, we had laundry up there, I liked it killing it, laundry, I stepped in there and it was about that far from the street level down to the, where the floor had dried down. And I failed, like broke my leg. But anyway, a guy came in, he bought that building and renovated it. A lady put a mattress factory in there. And when we got two of them, I picked the very worst one, to go pick it up. I said, we got about two of those buildings are free, everybody started cleaning their town up. And propped it my into something that builders, building inspectors don't like to do. And now, if you condemn a building, you've got to have the credentials that I have and you've got to have the fine credentials that your building inspector has.
So could you help us differentiate, is there a difference between codes enforcement and building inspector?
Yes, ma'am, and I tell you, I brought a book. What did I draw?
Just a pen.
Oh, okay. I brought an older property maintenance book right here. And of course, this one here is expired, you might want to pipe that around, let them look at it. And a case that's near here, I'll pipe it down, I don't know if I have enough.
Just so I'm clear, so property maintenance and codes enforcement? So what is the codes enforcement?
The codes enforcement is, well, I'll pipe this around here, that'd be more separate, why not? That was in the middle of Red Bull Springs down there when I came in. Not only is that an eyesore, but I retired to make express, and you take a truck, a trailer that's loaded, and you set it down the ground, and that ground gets real wet, there's a possibility the whole front of that trailer will go down. If there's a child or anybody on it, it'll probably kill them.
Let's try to get one.
I had a time with that gentleman there, he didn't have a plan to act up. But you know, he came in there, he poured pads, he set those stands in front of that trailer on pads. He came in, he painted those trailers, he retired the doors on, now they look good. That's set in the middle of town between two parks, those four trailers there. I took the man's name off, so.
So this would be part of property maintenance?
That's part of your property maintenance. Your property maintenance says keeping your buildings up and keeping your junk cars out of your yard, lawns.
So then codes enforcement?
Is a complete different thing.
Okay, what would that be, could you give us an example?
Building codes enforcement, I just got two going through them, that's when you start refounding down there, you got an inspector and inspects it. When your house framed in, your building inspector comes out and inspects that.
I guess the, what is the actual setbacks and what would that be, setbacks, site plans?
Well, that comes in your zoning right there.
Okay. Yes, sir.
I'm confused in that you talk about your buildings maintenance and whatnot, how is that different from what Mr. McHenry is doing now as far as if a new or, a new building is going up or a building has been redone and he goes in and he looks at each stage of it? I don't understand the difference.
That's building inspection.
Okay.
Now, your property maintenance says is you dilapidate buildings in your town, your old car's sitting inside your houses over there and that, that runs into your property maintenance.
But it sounds like building inspector and codes overlap.
Well, they're two different things. You, the, the property maintenance right there is a book from the same company that, that writes your book on your building inspection, but it's a completely different thing.
I'm not sure then, what, what does Mr. McHenry do now?
He does building inspection.
Building inspection.
Any of the inspections that are involved with the building permit application is what he inspects.
Does he want to do codes, as he said?
He told me that he would do the setbacks that go along with the building.
Well, he's got to do that to issue the permit, right?
Yeah, but the codes, as far as the building, the new construction itself, yes, he said he would do.
His existing issues with property over the years, and how it's historically gone, for example, when Coy Silcox was the building inspector, he and or the mayor would get together and somebody would voice concern to the mayor and he'd send Coy out there to say, look at it, then Coy'd get back, report back to him and Oakley, mayor or Coy would call me and say, you write a letter to Joe Blow about his whatever. And that's how it got to me. So it's, to some extent, it involves the city attorney's position from, from the standpoint of trying to make sure that the teeth, I guess, is put in the, in the, the work that the building inspector is doing or the codes, code violations is brought to attention to the property owner. Sometimes, sometimes in the past, the property owner has been spoken to by the, by the person saying, we looked at this and this is the issue, if he doesn't clean it up or she doesn't clean it up, then a lot of times it goes a little step further and the attorney gets involved.
So is there something within our ordinances right now that would enforce, for instance, you taking legal action then? Or putting a lien, or how does that work?
Well, a lot of times in the past, it's gotten to the point where we've come to city court to enforce, not a lot of times, just probably over twenty-something years, I've gone to city court less than half a dozen times to, to enforce the codes and to get the property owner to do something with the property. I've written many letters, but probably go into city court just a few times.
We have one thing downtown, some tires that were beside of a Harris store there. And we had written several letters about that and they did finally, but there's still some there. In a case like that, what would we, what would you do?
Well, there's procedures that legally you have to go through, property maintenance, you've got more procedures to go through and it's more complicated. That's why most building inspectors don't want to. If that guy's got a house over there and it's dilapidated, falling in, you can't just go over and tear his house down. Number one, you've got to write that man a letter. And what I'd do, I send two letters out, I send one registered and one regular letter. You've got to give that guy twenty-one days to respond. Well, if he don't respond in twenty-one days, then you've got to take other actions. If he does within twenty-one days, he can go before an appeals board. And that appeals board makes the ruling either way. Well, then if he does what I do, then that's when we go to court.
I'm trying to determine how that's different from what we might be using now.
I've got a question, if I might, is that, in that, do we have the ordinances in effect on books now? How high your grass can be, is that another?
Twelve inches, right?
But.
Okay, okay, sorry.
May I say something?
Sure.
Okay, I don't know what ordinances you've got, but a lot of ordinances were passed years ago. I got in that first property maintenance, I took, a lot of those laws have been changed. Now, if you adopt international property maintenance codes, that's the same one that the building codes is. If you adopt them, when they go to court and they lose two or three times or four or five times on a case, they rewrite it and put it in the book. But some of these older laws that are on the book, a lot of these towns right here, a lot of them have been changed and you can't enforce them anymore. But now here's one thing you've got to watch too. If, I'd like to take, if you want to hire me, I'll take your ordinances that you've got written and I'll go through them and I'll check what I can, because even the attorney here will tell you, if that building is, if that building is put, well, let me explain it to you like this. Just say there's a whiskey store sitting next to a church. If it was there before your ordinance was written, that guy can't, you can't put that whiskey store out. Okay? But if you've got ordinances written, he can't build a whiskey store there. Now, it's that one there that was already there, it's grandfathered in. So what I'd like to do is take your ordinances and check the violations you've got out here and make sure that we get those violations before you make any new laws on property maintenance. Did you understand what I'm talking about? If it's there before the ordinance is written, it's grandfathered in.
Okay, I, then I. No, I just have a question because I'm not that familiar, I know we have an ordinance against. No, I just have a question because I'm not that familiar. I know we have an ordinance against grasses being over eight inches. Do we have an ordinance against like automobiles and things in the yard? Is that in like municipal codes or, okay?
There's a property, property maintenance under municipal codes.
Do those codes that we have allow us then to take account of legal action Mr. Dyer's talking about? For most of these things?
Yes.
And it would go through?
Depends on, yeah, usually, well, I don't know. If you had a codes maintenance person, it could very well be that if he goes to municipal court, there's not another attorney. The codes person might very well take care of it. My experience with Judge Brooks is he's always wanted the attorney to be involved.
Okay.
I would like to say one other thing. I like to go to court as a very last resort. I like to treat people like I'm treated. I don't like going and say, hey, listen, you're gonna do this or you're gonna do that. When you do that, you've done the wrong thing.
I have a suggestion. Let me just throw it out. Since Mr. Dyer, I mean, excuse me, Mr. McHenry isn't here. Could we table this to our next meeting and have some more time to think about this and see what Mr. McHenry would be willing to do and so we can kind of compare the two here? Yes, sir?
I've got an email that Mr. McHenry sent me. If you don't mind me, I'll read it.
I think we all received.
Yeah, y'all want a copy? I was gonna read it for the public, so the public, said, Mr. Evil, regarding the codes enforcement of the city of Carthage, I would like to continue to inspect new construction and additions on residential and commercial buildings. I'll be glad to check the setbacks on these projects also. However, it has been requested that I also do other codes enforcement duties such as property maintenance issues. I'm not interested in these extra duties at this time. I'm willing to help the city of Carthage in any way I can, but time and other constraints keep me limited. I will continue to support and provide information to the city no matter what steps that it takes in the future. Let me know if I can be of assistance. So basically, what I'm wanting to point out here is, we've had Lynn, we've got two new businesses coming in. We got one of those businesses, business owners over here. It's been very friendly. And the last planning commission, the one thing we discussed was that we would let the planning commission finish its audit and implement all the codes that have already been voted on and approved. Because basically what happened is there's been a lot of things that the council's voted upon, but they haven't been put into the codes. And so because of that, and then Mayor Smith recommended that, you know, we come up with a city vision so that we have a foundation for the codes enforcement. So kind of right now, where we're at is, we don't have that foundation. It's kind of everywhere where there are codes and we can take legal action. But what, the situation I want to make sure we avoid is not go back to where we were with the prior building inspector where it was, we went from nothing to all. And we take, we lay a solid foundation for what we need to do and then we take a stepped approach to code enforcement. Because if we go all in, it's just gonna go back to month-long delays costing business owners tens of thousands of dollars. It's gonna discourage new growth and we, I mean, we don't want tires stacking up. We don't want junk cars. Nobody, nobody here wants that. But if we go full on in right now with this strict enforcement, it's not gonna be good for businesses.
We don't have a motion yet, either way.
Uh, we're just discussing right now. This is just discussion.
Question for, for Mr. Dyer, would you be willing to do the codes and maintenance part of it? And with Mr. McHenry doing the building inspection?
Well, I wouldn't take, property maintenance is one thing I don't like to do. The only thing that you'll make any money on is building codes. So that's why I couldn't afford to take them on one basis. I just got through, I resigned. I was doing Ray County and Spring City and three other municipalities. I just resigned from Ray County and Spring City because I had more going. Now, you were talking about the gentleman, are you the gentleman that's got the business going? Okay, if that building permit was written through and went through Mr. McHenry, he will be your inspector until your job is completed. He gives you a C O one. Anything that's written before I come in, the former codes inspector takes care of it.
The thing I want to make sure that we're not doing is we're not trying to subcontract this problem away. We can't do that. We can write, and in the meantime, until we get this foundation set, we can, we can write letters like we've done before. Let's just write letters, make recommendations, and then get on a solid path that the planning commission puts forward. That's gonna take a lot of the public input, a lot of our input and roll forward that way. It's, I just, I just do not want an unfriendly business environment. And this, this code enforcement and rolling straight into it can absolutely create that. And that's my, that's my piece about it.
I agree with Cole on that. That being said, and I won't put this in a formal motion just yet, but for discussion. It sounds to me like we do need to table this and get more input from our citizens. Possibly with a town meeting, I don't know, to see how, just how in-depth they want us to enforce the codes in the maintenance situation. And it's nothing against Mr. Dyer, but we represent our constituents and I know a lot of them have voiced opinions against coming down too hard on mowing your grass, so to speak. But yes, I don't think any, virtually nobody's opposed to starting to implement some things. We need to move forward on that.
Okay.
The situation with, you know, we're talking about the tires, and I think we sent a letter to the gentleman about the tires. The problem with that tire situation, besides being a visual thing for the city, when you get across the bridge, there it is, is the upcoming season of mosquitoes, which they're full of water. And that's gonna be a bad problem this year, I have a feeling. So those tires need to be addressed, you know, not for the whole.
When was the last time the city actually had to go to court for a property maintenance issue?
Several years, several, three or four years ago with Mr. Mark's building. With the back facade, the tree growing out of it. I've got pictures.
Councilman Teddy, you wouldn't make that in a formal motion?
Well, I would like to ask Mr. Todd a question too, as our incoming attorney, is that, that being said, when a situation like, and we didn't go in depth about it, but there was a gas station that, well, it's a service station. There's tires stacked up and they've been asked to remove them. Is that something as city attorney you would address with perhaps a more stern or letter or something? Does that affect?
Again, I'm not familiar with what ordinances you have in place currently, but if you've got an environment or a property that has tires that are causing infestation, that's a clear public health issue, then it's probably pretty safe to think that you can enforce that, including up to getting not only ordinance violations, but also maybe injunctive relief. But you have to, again, it's very case in fact specific because with, with property maintenance enforcement, you can have situations that don't present health standards, but people may want to have action taken. And you can incur liability from the city if you prosecute those. So again, I'd have to look at your ordinance, see what you have on the books, see what the situation is, see what the recommendation of the inspector, whoever it is. I mean, that's gonna be your primary witness at a trial, so we heavily on their opinions.
Could we table this and get some more information?
I'll make a motion that we table it and study it further with thanks to Mr. Dyer. Because I know you've got a busy schedule. I know a little bit about all you do. Thanks, my buddy.
I'm gonna leave that property maintenance book and you can study it through.
So we have a motion to table, and we second.
I'll second the motion.
The motion is to table this to next time.
That all?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. We'll talk about it in the next meeting. Thank you. Any discussion of this?
I got just one thing. Like, would it be possible that we could make it where we keep Lynn? Like, like we keep him, like if we make a motion or whatever to keep him as building inspector and then designate someone else to be codes enforcer?
I think if.
He was, he was saying it basically that there's no. Well, I'm saying like, not him specifically, but like, can we put it into place where we just write a letter? Is that what?
Well, I just want to make sure we keep Lynn.
We could do.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's, that's all I'm concerned about, honestly, is just make sure we keep him.
And that's, that's where I'm at, you know, is just, you know, finding a way to keep, you know, keep him. I mean, Lynn's a, everyone I've talked to, counties and counties and counties and cities, everyone's, no one's said anything. And even he said something good, you know, he was talking about Lynn. But all that being said, I'm wondering if there's a way that we can keep Lynn, but do the, basically do the.
The motion is.
We're in discussion, but we're in discussion.
But it's about whether we table this or not.
Gotcha, and that's.
And we can discuss this next time when we have more information from Lynn, for instance.
Um, basically, I'm wondering if we can do it where there is, where we don't have to subcontract someone out at so much an hour. You know, the city employees can go and check on this stuff and we can write letters in the meantime. And, but then the other part of the motion would be, are we tabled until next meeting? Or do we, we're probably gonna need longer, especially if we're gonna have a public hearing. So do we want to table this to maybe May or June?
The point is table, table it to May and try to reschedule a public hearing. I don't know if you want that in the motion or not, but.
Yeah, so I'd say, I'd motion for amendment that we table this at least until May. And that we, and we do a public.
To table it to May.
To May.
Can I hear a second on the amendment, please?
I can second it back.
I'm gonna finish my amendment real quick, I'm sorry. So the amendment would be to table this until May on the basis that we have a public hearing to make that decision.
Okay, the motion is to table this to May on the basis we have a public hearing. Do I hear a second to that motion?
I can second it.
Okay, all in, well, any more discussion about that amendment? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so then, it's now, the motion is to table this to May with the, would you read it, please, again?
Table this until May with a contingent on having a public hearing.
And the public hearing will be decided by?
At your April meeting.
At the April meeting. There we go. Is that a?
I have another question.
Yes, sir.
If we're gonna table this to May, is Lynn remaining a building inspector until then?
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes. Okay, that's the motion, to table this till May with?
Contingent on having a public hearing.
Continuing by having a public hearing. Did we say when though? In April?
David said in April.
In April. All right, that's the motion. We're gonna table this to May contingent on having a public hearing in April. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It carries. All right, okay. Okay, the next one is discussion of whether to continue our mowing contract.
Yes.
What I understand, it's a three-year contract, right?
It is, and this is the last year per the contract language that you guys can renew it without it being bid out. Of course, that means next year it has to be bid out. But Dickerson Lawn Service has been doing it now and from what I know, Joey has agreed to continue for another year at the same price. I just need to know if y'all want to approve this contract and move forward with him.
Did you all get a chance to look at the contract?
So, and just to get history from, from you all, because you were on council before. So we, we did a contract before at three years and we can renew it every year at the same price, but it doesn't have to get rebid and then we rebid after three years.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, he does a normal job. Like, the guy that we had beforehand, before Dixon, or Nixon, or Dickerson, sorry, just like, it was not good, so.
Is it, as far as what y'all saw before, was it a good rate as far as the $24,000 on it?
I think it was a middle.
Yeah, I mean, it's just the old cemetery.
Uh, what, five, six, seven.
Well, I'm talking about, how many?
Yeah.
Not Memorial Gardens.
No.
That's, they do that.
Okay.
It's, I can read them if you want to. It's Ridgewood Cemetery, Baker Cemetery, Cedar Hill Cemetery, which is now McKinnon Memorial Gardens, Walton Cemetery and the Old Cemetery on Third Avenue West.
And y'all feel like he's doing a great, he's doing a great job. It's well worth it.
To the best of my knowledge, we haven't had any complaints.
So that's.
How often does he do it?
No news is good news.
This is his third year. This is his third year. Is that what you asked me?
No, how long, I mean.
I bet he does once a week at least.
Oh, yeah, possibly more, because in the contract, I believe it says the grass can't get, yeah, any higher than three inches.
No complaints, huh? Okay.
If I'm understanding, it's just a formality, because this is the third year of a three-year contract. So next year, we would have the ability to rebid.
If they were unhappy, they could bid it out this year. They just have an option.
Do I hear a motion to continue it this year?
Make a motion, we continue the contract.
A motion to continue, or do I hear a second? Any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so we will continue this year. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? That's our last.
Motion to adjourn.
Second? All in favor? Okay, adjourn.